I thought I saw, you know, it's kind of hard not to.
Yes, I'm a big target.
It's good to see you.
Good to see you as well. Good evening. Chief Mark, I have to say a few words on behalf of Demetrius. I met Demetrius for the first time 12 years ago. One of my clerks said this young man in the lobby had some questions about law enforcement. Went up to the lobby, there he stood. We spoke about 45 minutes. The impression he made was so favorable, I called Chief Porchewar on Unimberg and said, "Would you sponsor him for the part-time police academy?" He responded immediately. He worked at Pittsburgh State for nine and a half years, did a fantastic job. During that nine and a half year stretch, he got a bachelor's degree, business administration, master's in business administration, currently working toward his doctorate in business administration, assistant professor at Bristol Community College, married his high school sweetheart, has three beautiful young children, is a homeowner in the city of Pittsburgh, and the last 12 years, at least once a week he gets called me, oftentimes twice a week or more, all hours of the night, to express his one huge passion, his one goal, is to become a Pittsburgh police officer. And to me, it's an honor to be here tonight as he gets appointed as a permanent reserve police officer for the city of Pittsburgh. To me, it's like having a son follow in my footsteps. So, if you're a candidate, Demetrius Phillips.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Thank you. I've known Demetrius for many years, and you couldn't ask for a more fine, upstanding citizen in the city of Pittsburgh. I have never seen an angry bone in his body. Maybe he hides it well, but I've never seen it. He's very nice, very intelligent, and he's invested in the city. And I know about his great work on the Pittsburgh State University Police Force, and I am extremely pleased to know that he will be serving in this capacity. Citizens of Pittsburgh will surely benefit greatly from his service, his continued service. So, I wholeheartedly welcome him to the Pittsburgh Police Department. Good luck to you.
Thank you. Ms. Jim, I believe you're...
Demetrius, I've known you for years, worked with you at Pittsburgh State. I think we were students at the same time, and honestly, you know, both as my time as a student while you were an officer there, and as my time as staff, there was no one as part of that Pittsburgh State Police Department that was more approachable, more friendly, and more knowledgeable than you. You've been to over 40 schools, helped students and faculty, and members of the community alike. I still owe you a great debt of gratitude, as you once pushed my wife out of a snowbank during a visit at Pittsburgh State. So, I'm going to be thanking you for years, because apparently I didn't pick up the phone during that, so I'm still hearing about that. So, honestly, you're an amazing person, you're a committed person to the city of Pittsburgh, and I think you'll be a great attribute to this city. And I notice this as a reserve police officer, I certainly hope that's sooner placed with a full-time police officer.
Thank you. Counselor Green.
I've only known Demetrius for probably two or three years now, but I'm honored to call him a friend and a colleague. And there is no one more passionate about Pittsburgh than Demetrius. And I think that we should all strive to be more like Big D in every aspect of our life. So, I appreciate you more than you'll ever know, and we'll stand behind you 110% every time I can.
Thank you. Counselor Don.
I just want to vouch for his passion for Pittsburgh. I've heard his name many, many times for quite a long period of time before I met the gentleman, and I'll vouch for his passion for Pittsburgh.
Counselor Johnson.
I guess I'll just keep going, right? Since I've known you since you were in high school and played basketball with my son, and then that just fostered a recognition that we've been able to talk in different areas when you've come into the restaurant, when I see you on the street, and I definitely enjoy those conversations on the sidewalk, going through the Pittsburgh State neighborhood. And again, it's just all about the city, and he's always been about the city. And he's very truly a family person as well, and I really think that he'll make a great permanent reserve police officer for the city of Pittsburgh. So, good luck to you, sir.
It's an honor to be here as you come to a start of a big career, and we know you're going to do very well, Demetrius. Thank you.
Motion to accept.
We have a motion and second on the appointment. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. It is unanimous.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you.
I need one please. My pen came off. Okay. I'll get this to you sometime. I don't know. Sometime.
Hopefully, it's a few less questions you have to answer on a nightly basis.
I'll just ask.
Yeah, right?
Do you still have to go to all of them?
Yeah. Or do you just do...
No.
Okay. All right.
Oh, we're on K Town Street of the town of K Town. Home Farms or whatever.
Hopefully, it's a few less questions you have to answer on a nightly basis.
I'll just ask.
Yeah, right?
I'd like to ask you a question.
Do you still have to go to all of them?
Yeah.
Or do you just do...
No.
Okay. All right.
Oh, we're on K Town Street of the town of K Town. Home Farms or whatever.
I'm just going to...
What's that?
She just stepped out.
Okay. I'll just say we defer the special presentation.
End of story.
Good.
We don't want to go there.
Agreed.
I didn't get any reply. I might email, did you?
Nope. Thank God.
Agreed.
We'll conduct the swearing-in.
We'd have to be appointments. We'd have to do the report.
Why did we not pass the... Did that not make it...
Permanent Reserve Police Officer.
I like this much. You think? I'm not doing this for my family.
Counselor motion? We're waiting on you.
Story of my life. Three, two, one, go.
Good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, May 17, 2016. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Pittsburgh City Council. Counsel. Counsel Clark, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public which it stands, one nation, ungodly, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Madam Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call?
President Kuschemerik.
Present.
Counselor Bean. Counselor Boishman.
Present.
Counselor Beesaw.
Present.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Here.
Counselor Donnelly.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Present.
Counselor Joseph.
Here.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Tran.
Here.
Public forum. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you're addressing a public hearing petition, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda which you are addressing. Does anyone wish to speak at this time? Hearing none? Oh, sorry.
My name is Chris O'Shaw, the president of Charkin Properties and Destari and Chabo, and I would just wanted to take a moment to plead with those of you who are on the fence of voting in the affirmative for the one-way Main Street, to please vote for, I'm sorry, one-lane Main Street. I've been a business owner down on Main Street for 10 years, and I can say that with a great degree of certainty that looking out the 10-foot windows of glass in Destari onto Main Street, there's a question of safety without any question in my mind that this two-lane racetrack is not serving my customers well, it's not serving my business center tenants well, and it is definitely hindering development of my building. I, for the past seven and a half years, have been seeking a restaurant to occupy the space beside Destari, and for seven and a half years, I've heard one similar response, and that is without outside seating, the viability of a restaurant goes down dramatically. We've tried outside seating at Destari, and the only time it worked was when we actually had valley parking at the same time. That was about seven and a half years ago. We were approved to have outside seating at Destari. We had envisioned the alfresco dining experience with valley parking to be a great contribution to the city. We were shut down and told by the city that the attempts at valley parking was actually slowing traffic down, but I can say definitively that it was the only time that our outside patrons felt safe. Anytime you're sitting outside of Destari, traffic speeds are so excessive that people just don't want to be out there. So, I would really request and plead for anybody who's on the fence to strongly consider voting in the affirmative for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kimlastra Maxwell, candidate for state rep in the third Worcester District, and I would like to speak on behalf of the one-lane Main Street. As not only the candidate, but someone who lives on Main Street, I think I can really speak on behalf of it. Mornings times across the street, right now, the crossing block is not outlined properly. So, the project did get started, but it wasn't completed. So, there's still the crosswalk that needs to be completed. It's hard to cross the street in the morning. I cross the street every day in order to get to the parking lot to get to work. So, there is benefits to slowing it down. I do agree with some of the stuff that were mentioned here in terms of looking at adding things like merging. I spoke to the gentleman before, and I know people brought up just concerns of the buildup in traffic, and I think we can add to the project by adding merging signs that would make it even better that when you come from two lanes down to one lane. So, there's some fine tuning that needs to be done, but I think we're moving in the right direction. When we look at redevelopment, when we look at supporting small businesses, these are all steps that we should be thinking about, and these are small steps that we should be taking. If we have considered a lot of projects in the past and we haven't moved forward, it's time for us to move forward. The stalling, the back and forth, it's really not benefiting our city. It's really time for us to... If we have the university doing this research for us, we have their support, how can we move forward and how can we move this project forward? And also respectfully taking everyone's concerns into consideration, but how do we move forward? How do we take this fresh, new idea, compare our cities to the cities that are in similar positions like us, and then take the steps to really move this forward? So, I'm definitely in favor of it, and I'm definitely saying, let's move forward, consider this, and I hope tonight we think of the small businesses, the people like me who live right on Main Street, and it is, it's, you're taking sometimes a risk in where do I cross the street, or how busy it is, and not necessarily being friendly for people who would like to come and just walk down, drive your bike down on Main Street. So, I hope you guys really consider this project and move forward with it.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Thanks for your time. I'm Matt Founier, local business owner, property owner, and developer in Pittsburgh. Currently own 409 Main Street in Pittsburgh, too, which is a project we're looking to develop downtown. I'm here to really support and speak in support of that project for the one-lane Main Street, and also ask you guys for your support as well. One of the things that we have as an issue in the city that I think everybody is aware of is we have certain challenges that we have to overcome. Some of these challenges are created 80 years ago, 100 years ago at this point, and with the progression of vehicles and density in traffic, you know, commuter rails and all the things that are happening in the downtowns, we have to look at projects and these issues as a team and as a whole together. It's progression, not perfection. So, we have to look at, you know, these trouble issues and figure out how to fix them and not be afraid to try different ideas. Walkability, transportation, parking, you know, these are types of things that we have to have conversations about but not be afraid to try some of these new ideas. If we want to get people downtown and we want to rent apartments downtown, or we want to have housing downtown, we need safe streets, safe sidewalks, in an area where people are going to want to go down and commute. If we're going to try to get, you know, owners of businesses downtown, but we have a freeway, which we, at this point, kind of do, it's going to be really tough to make people feel safe and want to cross the streets. I was on Main Street today and got passed, and there was actually a gentleman who was on Main Street all the time, and he works in one of the businesses, and he was in a wheelchair. We don't have a safe area right now for him to cross. I actually bet he probably fears to go across the street every day. I actually stopped, and another car blew right by me when he was on the sidewalk, on the right side. And I don't think we pass on the right most of the time. So, those are the types of things that I think we have to be aware of. It's about the public safety, it's about business and economic development and progression. So, if you guys could consider that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Hearing none. We'll move on to the agenda. There are no objections. We will now hear an oral report from the Appointments Committee. Counsel Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Appointments Committee, this is from the Appointments Committee dated May the 10th. Item number one, Chief Procurement Officer for the city of Pittsburgh, Mr. Mary Delaney, 127 10th Street Gardener, term to expire June 1st, 2019. The recommendation was that the appointment be approved. Item number two, a new appointment, the zoning board of appeals, term to expire January 1st, 2021, Mr. Anthony M. Zarella.
Counsel Clark, I would just ask that you omit the address from the reserve police officer. Sorry to interrupt.
Permanent reserve police officer for the city of Pittsburgh, Lutell Street and Pittsburgh. And I believe that was my third one. Yes, it was. I have a motion and second to accept the Appointments Committee report. Speaking to the motion, Counsel Boishman.
The president, I'd like to pull Chief Procurement Officer out.
Counsel, we have a motion and second on the floor currently. You're welcome to speak to the item, but currently, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
I'll withdraw my motion to... For the committee report, and just for the two that were the police officer and the zoning board.
I have a motion and second to accept the appointments for Mr. Anthony M. Zarella and Demetrius D. Phillips. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Unanimous.
Motion to accept. I know we want to swear in, but can I just do a motion to accept the procurement officer's appointment as well?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the chief procurement officer of the city. Speaking to the motion, Counsel Boishman.
On the motion, I really, nothing against Mary Delaney, there's nothing at all against her at all. I just don't feel that this is proper. We spent $35,000 on a study, on a study telling us about procurement, and they said that we should be giving the present procurement officers the proper tools to do the job, and we didn't do that. We did not do that. Mr. Jim Reynolds was on the study and did it by himself, and he said to me that, in all fairness, in all fairness to Ms. Wilson, that no matter who you would have had in that position, they would have been backlogged because they did not have the proper tools to do the job. Plus that, the lady's got over 25 years plus. And I look at it this way, counselors. When I worked for this company, the federal government came in, and they shut down this company, all because the paperwork wasn't done correctly. We could not manufacture anything. We had to go back and learn how to do the paperwork correctly. That's what happened to us. Then four years later, a friend of mine was told to sign off some paper, but the specs were not right. So, management got involved, and they started... I'm on the subject. I'm talking about procurement, Mr. President.
This is about the chief procurement officer and Mary Delaney who's in front of us.
And, right, and we're replacing the present one because we weren't happy. And this is when I bring it up.
I have a point of order to keep to the topic of chief procurement officer for the city of Pittsburgh and the qualifications of Mary Delaney for that position.
Well, Mr. President, point of order, point of order this, but when the federal government calls you in and they want to write you up...
Point of order.
Because of that.
Counsel Boishman. Counsel Beesaw, excuse me.
Thank you. I think what Counsel Boishman's talking about is I don't think we should be airing out anything that happened in the past here. The mayor, Zbaldyn, is right to appoint who likes this position and qualification. I was on the committee, and she is more than qualified to do this position, and I will do everything I can to support her in this job. Thank you.
Counselor Dina Tally.
I just wanted to say that it is not our job to talk about a person specifically. Secondly, the mayor has appointing authority in the law to appoint who he or she wants to be the chief procurement officer. Whoever the procurement officer is could be the best procurement officer in the world, but if the mayor wishes to pick somebody else, that is his or her right. It has nothing to do with the person. Nothing. You know how I know that? Because we didn't pick the person. The mayor did. He decided to go a route with someone he wanted in that job, perfectly within his legal right. You don't like the pick? Vote it down based on the merit of that pick, not what you may perceive is the reason why it was done. I think I'm being very reserved in any further comment because I've been highly critical in this respect, but if any appointed position in this city is a carryover appointment for several years, that's the law. That person could be the best, doesn't matter. Thank you.
I have a motion and second to accept the appointment of Chief Procurement Officer of the city of Pittsburgh, Ms. Mary Delaney. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
One in opposition. The motion carries. Congratulations. At this time, we'll conduct the swearing-in of our reserve police officer for the city of Pittsburgh, Demetrius D. Phillips. Demetrius, would you please come forward?
Yes, sir. Please repeat after me to take an oath. I do solemnly, promising swear... I do solemnly, promising swear. That I will faithfully and impartially... I will faithfully and impartially. And to the best of my knowledge and ability... And to the best of my knowledge and abilities. Perform and discharge all the duties... Perform and discharge all the duties. Incumbent upon me... Incumbent upon me. As a permanent reserve police officer... As a permanent reserve police officer. For the city of Pittsburgh. For the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. So help me God.
Be safe out there, all right?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Officer, if you'd like to take photos, may feel free to do so at this time. Happy to take a photo. Would you like to have both of your officers with you?
This is my father, Ray, so I got to...
From a different mama.
Moving on to the agenda. Resolution. No. No. Do we also have communications, too? Yeah. Communications. Communications from department head. We have a letter from Nathan LaRose, Parks and Recreation Director, regarding Heritage Park flag policy. City Council President Michael Kuschemerik from Nathan LaRose, Recreation Director, in response to the request by city council to the Board of Park Commissioners to review and set a policy for the flags at Heritage Park, the Board of Park Commissioners voted at their meeting on May 5th, 2016, to reaffirm the Heritage Park flag policy set on December 6th, 1976, and to have the Recreation Director oversee the implementation of the policy. The policy reads, Heritage Park flags, it was agreed to fly all flags in Heritage Park on legal holidays when flags are flown on Main Street. Further, it was agreed to research the date of the various ethnic national days and fly the American flag and appropriate national flags on individual national days. If additional flags are donated in excess of the number of flag poles, national flags will be flown in an alphabetical rotation system. As we now fly the flags on an annual basis and implementing this policy, the Recreation Department will be posting the policy and our process for implementing it on the website shortly, as well as beginning a campaign to solicit new donations of the flags. This year, we will be flying the existing flags that we have in storage. On individual national holidays, ethnic groups may donate a flag to be flown for a specific time period. Per the policy above, we will be rotating flags annually based on alphabetical order and the number of donated flags that we receive. We do not plan to continue to purchase new flags for the park through the Parks Department. Additionally, as flags wear out, we plan to reach out to the original donors for replacement. The Recreation Department will continue to review the implementation of this policy and refer any necessary changes or issues to the Board of Park Commissioners. Please feel free to reach out to the Recreation Department with any questions. There are two letters of appointment from Council President Michael Kuschemerik, as follows. It feels weird to talk in third person. First, reappointment of Deborah A. Valandry as Pittsburgh Assistant City Clerk, term to expire May 1st, 2019. Item two, reappointment of Anna M. Farrell as Pittsburgh City Clerk, term to expire May 1st, 2019. We'll refer both of those to appointments. Annual reports, Pittsburgh Public Library, July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2015.
Motion to waive the reading of the annual report and place it on file in the clerk's office. Second.
I have a motion and second to waive the reading of the report and to be placed on file in the city clerk's office. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Special presentation will be deferred into a later meeting. Council's a whole committee oral report, meeting of May 17, 2016. Discussion regarding one-lane Main Street, reference petition, 245...
Communications from Department Head, we have a letter from Nathan LaRose, Parks and Recreation Director regarding Heritage Park Flag Policy. City Council President Michael Kishmerick, from Nathan LaRose, Recreation Director, in response to the request by City Council to the Board of Park Commissioners to review and set a policy for the flags at Heritage Park, the Board of Park Commissioners voted at their meeting on May 5th, 2016, to reaffirm the Heritage Park Flag Policy set on December 6th, 1976, and to have the Recreation Director oversee the implementation of the policy. The policy reads, Heritage Park Flags, it was agreed to fly all flags in Heritage Park on legal holidays when flags are flown on Main Street. Further, it was agreed to research the date of the various ethnic national days and fly the American flag and appropriate national flags on individual national days. If additional flags are donated in excess of the number of flag poles, national flags will be flown in an alphabetical rotation system. As we now fly the flags on an annual basis and implementing this policy, the Recreation Department will be posting the policy and our process for implementing it on the website shortly, as well as beginning a campaign to solicit new donations of the flags. This year, we will be flying the existing flags that we have in storage. On individual national holidays, ethnic groups may donate a flag to be flown for a specific time period. Per the policy above, we will be rotating flags annually based on alphabetical order and the number of donated flags that we receive. We do not plan to continue to purchase new flags for the park through the Parks Department. Additionally, as flags wear out, we plan to reach out to the original donors for replacement. The Recreation Department will continue to review the implementation of this policy and refer any necessary changes or issues to the Board of Park Commissioners. Please feel free to reach out to the Recreation Department with any questions. Communication other, there are two letters of appointment from Counsel President Michael Kishmerick, as follows, it feels weird to talk in third person. First, reappointment of Deborah A. Valandry as Pittsburgh Assistant City Clerk, term to expire May 1st, 2019. Item two, reappointment of Anna M. Farrell as Pittsburgh City Clerk, term to expire May 1st, 2019. We'll refer both of those to appointments. Annual reports, Pittsburgh Public Library, July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2015.
Motion to waive the reading of the annual report and place it on file in clerk's office.
Second.
I have a motion and second to waive the reading of the report and to be placed on file in the City Clerk's office. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Special presentation will be deferred into a later meeting. Counsel's whole committee oral report, meeting of May 17th, 2016. Discussion regarding one-lane Main Street, reference petition 24514. Counselor Joel Caddy and various city residents to make Main Street a one-lane street with a bike lane on the left from Blossom Street to Old City Hall, including parking on Monument Park for library only, also raised crosswalks for pedestrian safety. It was amended to remove parking at Monument Park for library only. That was passed eight to two in a council whole committee.
Make a motion to accept the oral report.
I have a motion and second to accept the oral report from the council's whole committee meeting. Speaking to the motion, Counsel Joseph.
I just want to say, as a walker and a bicycle rider, I've walked Main Street many a times. I don't know, you probably have seen me do it frequently, or I have in the past. I've never had any problems walking up and down Main Street. I think that there are other issues that are related to why Main Street is the way it is right now. I do not want, I've already voiced my opposition to this for the reasons that I feel strongly about, but I will not be the one that'll be the one to get in the way of this, and I will vote to support it, only because I also would like to see if it's going to work or not work, okay? So, we can put it to bed once and for all. I'm not, I just think that there are other reasons. I would love to see Main Street be Keene, New Hampshire, but Main Street, Pittsburgh, right now is not Keene, New Hampshire. We fight other things that prevent us from being Keene, New Hampshire. And we need to have a, we have enough groups right now that are interested in Main Street, and that is what's going to make Main Street thrive, okay? Not a one-way Main Street, but the people that right now are investing in Main Street and the people that have invested their time and effort into this report and support it because what they're doing is investing and supporting Main Street. And for that, I thank you very much, and I would never get in the way of your progress. And that's not the type of counselor that I ever want to be. But like I said, I'm not, I'm not a, I'm not a big fan of further congesting Main Street, but I will, I will support the plan because the businesses want the plan, and it's just one more step of investing in our businesses.
I have a motion and second to accept the report from the oral, from the council's whole committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Resolution 8816. Resolution adopting the Monticlet Regional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan 2015 update. Counselors, you received in your mailboxes a lengthy disc containing any number of documents. I'll read the resolution. Certification of adoption, City of Pittsburgh, Massachusetts, a resolution adopting the Monticlet Region Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan 2015 update. Whereas, the City of Pittsburgh recognizes the threat that natural hazards pose to people and property within the community and, whereas, the City of Pittsburgh has prepared a multi-hazard mitigation plan hereby known as the Monticlet Regional, Region Ha, Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan 2015 update in accordance with the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. And whereas, the Monticlet Region Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan 2015 update identifies goals and actions to reduce or eliminate long-term risk to people and property in the community from the impacts of future hazards and disaster. And whereas, public and community, public and committee meetings were held between January 31st, 2012 and September 29th, 2014 regarding the development and review of the Monticlet Region Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan 2015 update. And whereas, adoption by the community demonstrates our commitment to hazard mitigation and achieving goals outlined in the Monticlet Region Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan 2015 update. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Pittsburgh adopts the Monticlet Region Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan 2015 update at the meeting of the City Council held on May 17th, 2016.
Motion to accept Resolution 8816.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adopt the Resolution 8816. Anyone wishing to speak to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Order other, laying out of Turkey Hill Road and Goodfellow Drive and establish as public streets, reference petition number 21515, public hearing scheduled for June 21st, 2016.
Motion to send 8916 to a public hearing on June 21st, 2016.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 8916 to a public hearing on June 21st, 2016. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Loan order, 07316, loan order that the sum of $900,000 be and hereby is appropriated to pay the cost of parking garage repairs, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto that meet this appropriation. The treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow $900,000 under General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, 3A, or as any other enabling legislation, that the mayor is authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this project, and that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify under Chapter 44A of General Laws, any or all of the bounds authorized by this order, and to provide such information and execute such documents as Municipal Finance Oversight Board may require for these purposes. It's a final reading.
Motion to send 7316 to a final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 7316 to its final reading. This will be a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Deenatali?
Yes.
Counselor Donnelly?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Joseph?
Yes.
Counselor Caddy?
Yes.
Counselor Tran?
Yes.
President Kishmerick?
Yay.
Counselor Bean is absent. Counselor Boshman?
Yes.
Counselor Beazall?
Yeah.
Unanimous.
Orders, finance, 09016.
Move up.
I have a motion and second to send 9016 up to and including... Yes. Thank you, yes. All of them, to send...
Send 9016 to, through and including 9316 to the Finance Committee.
Okay. Understood.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 9016 up to and including 9316 to Finance and 9416 up to and including 10116 to the Council of the Whole Committee. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Ordinance 8216.
Move 81... What about 10216? Sorry.
Oh, 10216. Thank you, Counsel.
I was gonna, I was gonna make a motion, Mr. President, 10216 be sent to Council's whole.
We, we should, okay. Counsel, I'm being told this should be sent to its first reading first.
Move it be sent to its first reading and sent to Council's whole.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 10216 to its first reading and be sent to the Council's whole committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Ordinance 8216, amend City Code, Chapter 14, Article 1, sale of city-owned real estate, Section 14-2, procedure by adding paragraph 8 as follows, nothing herein shall prevent the duly-appointed custodian of tax possessions from implying any procedure set forth in Massachusetts general law, including but not limited to, MGL, Chapter 60, Section 77B, for selling or leasing property, reference petition 6916, final reading.
Move 8216 be sent to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised.
I have a motion and second to send 8216 to its final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Move 10316, 10416, and 10516 be sent to their respective committees.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 103 up to and including 105, Counselor?
Yes.
To their respective committees. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Move 10616 and 10716 be sent to the Planning Board and to a public hearing on July 5th.
I have a motion and second, send 106 and 10716 to meeting of the Planning Board and the City Council public hearing on July 5th, 2016. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous.
Make a motion for petition 180, a motion to remove the table manner and forward on to the police chief.
Second.
I have a motion and second, do we need two separate motions? Okay. I have a motion and second to remove 18016 from the table and refer to the police chief. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. I have a motion and second to adjourn announcements. Counsel Clark?
Just about, about tomorrow night, Mr. President, is that remaining the same? Are we still meeting tomorrow night as we are?
Correct, Counsel, yeah.
Just wanted to let everybody remind about that.
Tomorrow night will be a budget, budget hearing at Kent Recital Hall at Pittsburgh State University from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. It'll be the first of several budget hearings. This will be the one and only held at Kent Recital Hall. All future City Council budget hearings will resume as normally scheduled at Memorial Library following Wednesday's meeting at Kent.
Thank you.
Counsel Deenatali.
I just wanted to announce that on Thursday, May 19th, this Thursday, the Pittsburgh firefighters are holding a pasta dinner to benefit Civic Days at the Pittsburgh Armory, aka the senior center, from 4:00 to 7:00. Tickets are $5, and it's sponsored by the Pittsburgh Fire Union, 3128.
Counsel Beazall.
I just wanted to thank Crossroads Community Church and everyone that showed up for the award going by. Clean up there was hundreds, hundreds of volunteers. It's always humbling when you know there are so many people that love the city and are willing to give their Saturday to devote to the city to make it a better place. Thank you so much, everyone, for coming out, and it was really a great day. And I think Paul and I picked up some tires and we got some, I don't know, Paul was collecting the empty nip bottles for future council meeting. So, I'm curious to see what it's all about. Thank you.
I'd like to echo the sentiments of Counsel Beazall and just thank folks who came out this past Saturday. Additionally, there are several agencies, in addition to Crossroads, who donated a tremendous amount of resources and manpower and lady power to the effort. I'd also like to thank the Pittsburgh Fire Department, the Pittsburgh Historical Society, and Pittsburgh Pride, who donated resources to purchase perennials and annuals for Main Streets to continue with the efforts of the past. So, I'd like to thank those organizations that stepped up to financially support and those individuals who contributed to the day. I'd also like to thank those for the past four weeks who have participated in citywide cleanups. I think it's been a tremendous showing this season, and I think it's a nice way to jumpstart us into our day of civic, our season of Civic Days that will approach in late June and early July. Counsel Joseph.
I just wanted to say that it was a great Sunday morning to go down to the newly renovated Pittsburgh Police Park. Again, investment in our downtown, what a beautiful job they did with rejuvenating that area, rejuvenating that park, what a great service they had, honoring their fellow police officers, past and present. It was just a great morning overall, and it was nice to see all the community out there. Thank you.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
We don't need to give anything back to you.
Stolen anything from you?
I don't think so.